So it is 5:30 and we will call our meeting to order. A roll call for the city, please Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronane. Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here. Rachel, are you still the chairperson or?
Turn it over to the chair.
You are the, that's where you are. And you have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Alright, let's all say the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I mentioned, our people, both with the city and the county, do a good job of bringing stuff to us so that we don't have to spend a lot of time on it. And what we have tonight is typical of that. We have these joint meetings when we have areas that we jointly administer with the county for rezoning or other activities. And Brett brings these to us and gets them on the agenda. And as we say, they've done the work and they don't bring us things where we have to spend an awful lot of time looking into the details because they've done that for us. So typically it happens pretty quickly and pretty routinely. This ordinance that we have for our joint meeting tonight is a rezoning ordinance that passed without objection last week. And Brett, why don't you just give a brief explanation since these people weren't here last time?
It's a piece of property, they're requesting to rezone it from agricultural, agricultural district and mini agricultural district to mini agriculture. What that means is the property is currently split zoned, it's got two zoning districts on the property. So they're trying to combine it into one zoning district so they can permit them to do what they'd like to do with the property.
So we need a motion from the council for final adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Bunsonis and second by Rux. Questions from anyone? Roll call, please Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. County?
We have ordinance 481 of the roar rezone. It'd be the second read in the adoption. I would entertain a motion. So moved. Moved by Pfeiffer, second by Kipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Short and sweet.
We have no other business. You're welcome to stay, but I assume you won't.
The roads are getting kind of bad in the county.
So I have a question for Rachel. Every time that you do a vote, do you get a kiss?
You talked about the roads. I saw that Mowbridge is virtually impassable out in that area and from their west, that there's just, there's no travel advised at all out in those directions. Well, with that, we will move on to the city commission part of this. And I would entertain a motion to approve last week's minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Olson. If there are no changes, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have a point on our agenda at this point every week where we allow open forum for anybody that wants to address the council. And for the person who is talking about putting a streetlight in, this would have been an opportunity for any meeting, for anything like that, or for anything else that the city does where somebody from the community just wants to tell us what they think and ask us to think about it. And if any of you ever have that, we'd love to have you here and add a little excitement to our meeting. So if any of you have anything on your mind right now, you can, you can do that. Hearing none. Let's move on. Our consent counter is routine city business. Items A, B, and C.
Moved. Second.
Motion Lunsman, second by Remley. Questions on any? All in favor of approving, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Under due business. Item A, establishment of a charter review subcommittee of the council. City attorney.
This is a follow-up to last week's discussion regarding charter review subcommittee. The only difference in this particular motion on tonight's agenda is that we're identifying the council members as Bunsonis, Ronane, and Slate Hanson. Also noting that they would periodically report their activities to the council, so it's not something that would be on a deadline. It would be something that would be brought back to the council when they have something to actually report. And then lastly, to authorize the city attorney to advise and assist the subcommittee. So I'd request that a motion be made accordingly.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Olson. Questions or comments? My personal thanks to those who are serving on that committee. I'm glad I'm not on. If there are no other questions, all in favor of approving that as presented by the city attorney, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item, B. This is brought to us by the city manager, who, by the way, he isn't just skipping out tonight, he's got an important meeting relating to the airport, I believe, tonight. Item B. It is a request for hanging different sizes of denim jeans throughout the community to bring awareness to sexual assault and child abuse in the month of April. Brett or Ron, I would assume there is an issue with this, so that it's come before us, that otherwise it would be in violation of one of ordinances?
The reasons for the council is right now, the sign ordinance doesn't permit anything of this nature. And I, lack of a better term, punted off on the city manager. And the reason being is, I looked at this a lot like the Special Olympics polar bear that they have during their state bowling tournament. And I thought it was kind of like the same issue, so I thought we'd bring it forth to the council to maybe flush that out and see if that's something you're interested in approving or not.
The intent of this is to make the community think about the issues related to sexual assault and child abuse for the entire month of April. Different sizes would be hung around the community, include the overpass on North Second, closed lines between fence posts and around businesses and other places around town and on the campuses. And do I have a motion to allow that?
Moved.
Second.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Remley. Questions, comments?
I guess the only comment I would have is, I don't know about Robin, we may have an issue with putting him on the overpass. I don't know if we want. Anyplace else in town might be good, as long as it's not in the visibility triangle, but I kind of want to keep people's focus when they're going over the overpass.
So along the fence?
Along the fence, and we want to make sure it's attached well.
And blowing off and getting into the traffic.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
It's an important issue, and so I think we need to be in front of this. So I'm supportive.
If you don't mind, I just want to weigh in on this. There had been some concerns on the part as to how this falls and if this falls in as a sign under the signing regulations. Is this in the nature of a leaf litter, litter, or something like that, depending on how it would be handled? We weren't quite sure where it fell, but I want for presidential purposes to make sure that this council understands that we're not bypassing any ordinances, we're not simply ignoring any ordinances, we're just trying to bring to the council's attention that there's this unique kind of a, an announcement going on. I'm not sure where it falls, but I don't feel like we're necessarily binding this council for future requests.
Jennifer, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just, I was going to say that I had read about this, and I think it sounds like a, I think it sounds like a funnel project that should bring some awareness. And also, I was going to see if, Rachel, you're here tonight for leadership, or are you here for this? Did you want to say something in regards to this? Do.
Come and tell us why you're doing this and what you're doing.
Okay, so I'm the shelter coordinator at Safe Harbor. And then April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, but it's also Child Abuse Awareness Month. Last year, we took different colored shirts and hung them on the two college campuses as a clothesline project. And that resembled sexual assault, child abuse, domestic violence, people who'd lost their lives to any kind of assault. So this is something different that focuses on child abuse and sexual assault, but to show it to the whole community, not just people who would be on the college campuses. These jeans would also be on the college campuses at some point. We've already been in contact with people at both universities for that. But this would be able to show more to the community that we do have sexual assault in our community. It is something that is prevalent. We do have child abuse. It is something that we do see on a daily basis, unfortunately. And it's something that we need to make aware to every single person that's out there. When Gina and I were discussing our April events, we just kind of joked, hey, I wish we could put this on the overpass. And then Gina was like, you should do that, you need to call them. So here we are. It's more so to get the awareness out there and to show people that it is something that is prevalent. It wouldn't be on both sides of the overpass, it would be on the east side, I guess, more on like the railroads side by like Mazelon. It wouldn't cover the entire fence, it would probably be different sections, and we probably wouldn't have it up for the entire month, depending on how many jeans we do have, as they would have to be on the college campuses as well. There would be smaller ones for children, so baby-sized ones, toddlers, different sized adult jeans, different colors. And on these jeans, they would have signatures from people within the community, so just an ordinary person, or maybe the mayor, you know, providing that they're going to be getting consent before they have sexual intercourse with somebody, rather than sexually assaulting somebody. That's kind of a pledge that we would gather from people. It goes kind of in what we did last year with our hashtag 98. And then the other jeans would have quotes and comments from survivors that we've worked with in the community, or that have been on the college campuses, or any other people that we've been in, I guess, communication with as well.
Okay. I was just going to ask, are you asking the citizens to put up, or are you putting all up, or are you asking for donations for jeans, or whatever? I just wanted to make sure that whoever hears this or sees it may have an idea of what they can do, maybe to help.
We did put out a post for jeans. We are requesting, if anybody's going through their closets to spring clean and wants to get rid of jeans, we'll absolutely take them. We would be putting them up as Safe Harbor staff and our interns, so we would be working with that. So from citizens, we would be asking for signatures on these jeans for you to pledge to get consent. And for you to donate jeans of any size, color, honestly. And we would be the ones that would be putting them up.
Thank you.
What about taking them down?
We would take them down as well.
Take them down, and you have a set date that you'll be taking everything down?
Pending that this got approved, we would have a set date.
Correct. What about if they blow off?
So we were going to hang them up with zip ties. I played softball at Northern and we had to do wind screens and use zip ties, and we honestly had pretty good luck with those, so I felt like jeans with zip ties would be okay. And it would be something that we would check regularly, not just put up and then come back and take them down. We would make sure that they're up and that everything is okay. If there was a leg that came off, I would go and I would fix it, or somebody from the office to make sure that it was still there to show people.
Any other questions?
Well, these are very serious crimes, and they tend to be hidden and sheltered in homes, as they have over the years and years. And Dave and I would both attest that anything we can do to help with the awareness, because most of the public is not aware unless they know a victim. And so the more we can make it aware, the better we can try to deal with these. Our teachers, our police, our shelters do a wonderful job of working with these victims. And so I just think it's very important that we increase the awareness.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, we have a motion and a second to approve of doing this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Some of you may be wondering why this is an issue at all. We have, I think Brett would confirm, a little bit more of a strict rules about temporary signs than a lot of cities. And the benefits of that is it looks a lot better around our city in this case. And Brett, we've had situations where seemingly harmless occasions where people might have a special sale and want to stick a half a dozen signs along Sixth Avenue or somewhere, and it seems harmless at the time, but we have the rules otherwise, there'd be no stopping it.
That's, that's true. Very true. And it keeps the community looking cleaner.
And I've been in communities where there aren't the rules and the signs are just there. Everybody's having a sale all the time, so everybody has to have a sign to compete with the other people who have signs. So that's why we had to go through this particular case. You will see temporary signs up sometimes for things like soccer sign up, or you know, kids' events and those kind of things. And a lot of those are technically violations, but they usually don't last long enough for us to get involved. But we'd still rather they not do it, I guess. Next item on the agenda, the council members have been provided a list of bills for approval of payment. I'd entertain a motion to pay those.
Item C.
Oh, I skipped. Okay. Number C, item C is, this is the appointed time for hearing on a on-sale retail liquor license for five days for the community theater.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Rux, and second by Olson. I presume there's nobody here to speak in opposition to this, so. Any questions? If not, all in favor of approving that license, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. And now item D. You've been provided a list of bills, entertain a motion to pay them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Slate Hanson. Questions on any of those bills? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson. Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley. Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. In case you're wondering, sometimes we can do voice vote, but when we're making a payment, we have to do roll call vote. I never really knew why, but.
State statute.
State statute, okay. The state statute actually defines the difference?
Yep, it does.
So why does the county not have to? Item E is also a payment, and this is the payroll for the city, February 17 to March 2, and city share our social security, old age, and survivors, insurance, retirement, health, and life.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Lunsman, second by Slate Hanson. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. We will not have the city manager's report tonight, as he is out and busy. But we have our city forester here, Aaron, to talk to us about Emerald Ash Borers. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you for having me. My name's Aaron Keys, city forester with City of Aberdeen, Parks, Rec, and Forestry. Unfortunately, Dr. John Ball, who was also going to do a presentation, was not able to make it due to weather and road conditions. He was coming from Brookings, so. So I will, I'm going to cover a portion of what actually he was going to talk about. He did send me a few slides, and so I'll cover, he was, his portion of the presentation was to bring everybody up to speed on Emerald Ash Borer. Most of us, I'm sure, are familiar with it, especially since it was found last year in Sioux Falls. Um, let's see. So Emerald Ash Borer, as many folks know, was discovered in Michigan in 2002. That's when it was discovered. They're not sure when it actually was arrived in Michigan. It was brought in accidentally from the northeastern China area on more than likely pallet wood. Here again, they're not 100% sure of, you know, what wood material it was brought in on, but they're suspecting pallet wood. In that portion of southeast Michigan, since 2002, 99% of their ash trees are dead and gone. In North America alone, we're looking at eight billion ash trees. Lots of different species of ash trees, but they, none of them are going to survive the insect epidemic, so there's no natural resistance. This insect's going to move through all the ash and take them all, too. So there's no, no resistance, they're all going to go. For South Dakota, our main ash species is green ash, although we do have a few others. There's white ash, there's purple ash, black ash, but by far, our most populous tree is green ash. Here again, zero resistance. This is a little bit different than the last epidemic we saw with Dutch elm disease, where Dutch elm disease, there is natural resistance in some of our elm trees, and that's why we've been able to hang on to them. Dutch elm disease has been in Brown County, I think, since 1978, right around there, and we still have elms. That's partly due to some natural resistance in our elm population. But in all, Emerald Ash Borer is by far the most destructive pest ever introduced into the United States. The picture, if everybody can see, on the left is the actual larva stage of the insect. That's the stage that does all the damage in the trees. It's actually right beneath the bark. It's creating those serpentine galleries that you can see on the picture on the right. It's basically severing all of the vessels under the bark that carry nutrients and water up and down the tree. And so it's starving the tree, and basically, it's starving the tree of water and food. And it starts at the top of the tree and slowly works its way down. So all infestations will start in the top portion of the canopy and move down. And if anybody has questions for this, you know, feel free to go ahead and ask. As far as identification, the picture you see here is a tree that, that's woodpecker damage, and that's why it looks white. All the woodpeckers have basically taken all of the bark off of the tree, and they're doing that because they're looking for that larva. And woodpeckers are extremely aggressive and seem to just love Emerald Ash Bor larva, because as you can see, this is a really good example of identifying symptoms of Emerald Ash Borer. Because if you come up to a green ash tree that doesn't have any bark on it because of woodpeckers, it's a good probability that Emerald Ash Borer's infested that tree. Because the bark's all the way down off the ground, more than likely, the insect's been in that tree for up to five years. This picture just shows all the bark laying on the ground. We'll see, you know, we see woodpecker damage in Aberdeen, but usually it's not as aggressive as the picture you see there. There's, they're going for insects all the time in trees, but usually our trees aren't heavily infested like that, like what you would see with Emerald Ash Borer. The biggest issue that communities have been having with Emerald Ash Borer is the ability for this insect to completely dry out the wood in a short period of time. It's basically drying that wood out so that it's so brittle that the trees are just falling over. The ones that are even half-dead are falling over. They're snapping off at the root system. The roots are usually dying off as soon as that insect establish itself in the top portion of the canopy. And then usually it's within five, Emerald Ash Borer can kill a tree within five years of infesting it. And so within that five-year period, the tree is so dried out that they're becoming hazards in communities and just falling over. There's instances of equipment driving into the yard and the vibrations that it creates on the ground is causing the trees to fall over. Most communities out east, the arborists and tree companies won't touch an ash tree if it's 50% dead, just because of the ability for the top part of the tree to fall out of it. And so the urgency with Emerald Ash Borer is that you want to be able to get the trees out as soon as possible, because once they're 50% dead or more, the odds of it just snapping off and being a hazard in a community shoots up and skyrockets greatly, so. One other slide I talked to you about before I get into the management portion is what they've labeled as the death curve for Emerald Ash Borer. It's basically the cumulative loss of ash trees. It starts slow, so once, I'll use Sioux Falls for an example, because it was just found in Sioux Falls. It was found about a year ago, and they've taken out 300 ash trees because they were infested with Emerald Ash Borer. And that's one year. If Sioux Falls were to do nothing, in the next four years, they'd lose 3,000 trees per year. Now, the curve, the curve gets greater after that, so year five to eight, and here again, this is if they do nothing, they'll be losing 20,000 trees per year. And so that's, that's the issue with Emerald Ash Borer, and that's the difference with Emerald Ash Borer and Dutch elm disease. And I use those comparatively, because we just got done with 20 years or 30 years of Dutch elm disease. And the fact, within five to eight years, Sioux Falls, if they did nothing, would be losing 20,000 trees a year. There's no way they would be able to keep up with having enough people to remove that many trees per year. And so what they're doing now is they're removing infested trees, and they're removing healthy trees as well, to help thin that population and bring it down. This last slide in John's presentation just shows where Emerald Ash Borer is at in the United States right now. The yellow is, are all the counties where Emerald Ash Borer is established. The red are counties where Emerald Ash Borer was found just last year. And you can see Sioux Falls made that list. What we've done with City Forestry Division, in 2016 and 17, we did a street tree inventory. So we made the decision that we need to find out exactly what kind of street tree population we have. And so we did, we hired interns to do the inventory for us. What we found, and I'll get into more details after this, but what we found was, we had 16,550 total sites that we inventoried or logged. 12,842 of those sites were actual trees, and the 3,708 of those sites were open, available places where we could plant trees. The collection of the data, we used a software program called Treekeeper. We used the handheld computers like, similar to what you see in the picture there. Some of the main things that we collected were genus and species. We collected defects, whether there was any issues that needed to be addressed with that tree that was being inventoried. We looked at condition of the tree, whether it was excellent, good, fair, poor, dead. We looked at dimensions, which is the height of the tree and the diameter of the trunk. And then we also had the opportunity to log maintenance issues, whether it needed pruning or other problems that needed to be addressed. And again, available space, which is a valuable, it's valuable information to have, so we know how many available locations in the boulevards we have where trees can be placed. And there's other things that you can collect with this, far more than what we utilized on it. Year planted, you know, appraised value of the tree, which it automatically gives you, and other special functions of it. This just shows you one of the most important things that we did get out of the inventory, the percentage of each species or genus of the trees. By far, obviously, green ash, we're looking at 37%. And here again, this is just boulevard trees. But looking at all of our boulevard trees, 37% of them are green ash. Ideally, you don't want anything, any one tree to be over 10%. And so, you know, common hackberries at nine, that's, that's actually pretty good. But once you get over the 10% margin, it's, it turns into an issue like when Emerald Ash Borer was brought in. And Emerald Ash Borer will not be the last major invasive insect that we have to deal with in the future. And so diversification is important. It has, we've known about the importance of diversification for, since Emerald Ash Borer was discovered and we realized what it was going to do to our ash populations. So we did develop a list. This was developed when I started around 14 years ago. It's, living up north, we don't have the luxury of the list of trees that some of the, our southern states may have, but we put together as many different types of trees as possible, and that will do well in our climate. We use this for boulevards, and we also use this for homeowners that are just looking for lists of quality trees that they can plant, or for shade trees in their yards. So diversification is extremely important when planting new trees. Out of the inventory, again, this kind of just shows you, I circled three areas, three neighborhoods that are very diverse with our tree populations. And the only reason is, is because these neighborhoods were developed within, you know, the last 10 years or so. And so there's a nice diversity of trees. We don't have 40% of one variety. They're all going to be under 10%, which is what we're looking for. Unfortunately, some of the other neighborhoods that were built in the 70s especially, I'm guessing they have even higher than 30. They could have 60% ash in their boulevards. We didn't break it down per neighborhood, but I do know Ashwood Heights, some of these other neighborhoods could have anywhere from 60% to 90% ash in their yards and in their boulevards. This just shows diameter, some of the other information we got out of the inventory. This just shows diameter, some of the other information we got out of the inventory. We have a nice percentage of 1- to 3-inch trees, only because we've been fairly aggressive in the last 14 years planting trees. It helped that we're not taking 1,000 elms down every year, so it gives us more opportunity to do more tree planting, to make up for those years that we had so many elms that we were removing. But if you see the 7- to 12, and 13- to 18-inch diameter trees, a very high percentage of those are going to be your green ash trees. And the 25-plus inch diameters, that's fairly low, because we've lost all our big elms. And so, what we found is kind of what we expected, but it's still good information to have. We do year-round tree maintenance. We utilize the inventory to help us do that tree maintenance. A lot of what we do in the wintertime right now is tree pruning, when it's not 30 below. We do get assistance from Public Works as well, because a lot of what we're trimming out in the wintertime are the areas that are going to be chip sealed the next, or this summer. So, the area we're trimming now is going to be chip sealed, so we can benefit the equipment that's going to be run down those streets. And we can also benefit the trees and our program for creating healthy trees and promoting safety and beautification. So, the chip seal route is seven-year cycle, so every seven years, we're hitting these neighborhoods, which maybe isn't quite ideal, but it's definitely better than some other communities are even getting there every 10 years. Proactive pruning is important, but proactive planting is even more important, I feel. The planting that we do now is a lot different than what was done 30, 40 years ago. We're focusing more on, here again, diversification of what's going in. We're focusing a lot on spacing these trees. We can still find in a lot of our neighborhoods, trees that were planted five feet apart or 10 feet apart, it just doesn't give them enough space to grow into what they're supposed to grow into. And so, we focus a lot on spacing, keeping away from the corners that would eventually create visibility issues, and avoiding certain utilities that may be found in the boulevards. So, a lot of the planting that we do is obviously to promote shade and beautification in our neighborhoods, but we're also looking more in-depth than maybe what was done in the past to avoid future conflicts. The Emerald Ash Bore management plan that I developed last year, a big portion of that plan is the goal of a preemptive approach of removing trees, similar to what Sioux Falls is doing right now, because they have the insect. I know that they wish they would have started this process earlier before it was found in that city. But our goal here with our plan is to actually be more preemptive, start looking at taking out 5% of our ash trees every year. And this will help spread the associated cost of a pending Emerald Ash Bore outbreak. The 5% is around 280 trees, and that's boulevard trees and park trees. Park trees, we probably have around 750 ash trees in our parks. So, if we look at 280, initially, we're, like this last summer, we looked at a lot of the ash that we marked were marginal condition, maybe more dead wood in them than we would want to spend pruning out. And so, initially, it's fairly easy to start marking ash, because we have a lot of declining and marginal ash trees in our community. But eventually, we're going to have to look at taking out healthier, or thinning out healthier ash in our neighborhoods, to try and get those percentages down, so that when it does arrive, we're not pushed into thousands of trees per year that are having to be removed, and the costs that go along with that. Because it's not only the tree, it's the stump, and then it's replanting, which part of our plan is a one-to-one replacement to help redevelop our canopy, our community canopy, which was maybe overlooked when we were dealing with Dutch Elm disease. But 5% is 280 boulevard trees a year. If we look at having a contractor assist us with that, it would be around 67,000 a year. That would include having the stumps removed, because we don't want to leave 280 stumps in our boulevards after these come down. The forestry division would be responsible for the other half. That would be the only feasible way to take out 5% of the ash, boulevard ash, is to have a contractor assistance. With the forestry division doing it, it would be, it would just not be feasible to take out 280 boulevard trees and then do the stumps as well. Here again, replanting diverse selection of trees, which is 280 trees would be around $42,000. But here again, we're already putting in boulevard trees. Around 150 so boulevard trees are going in already, so that number would not maybe be quite that high. As far as ordinance amendments that would be needed, they would definitely, the ordinance amendments are going to be what helps us, like it helped with the control of Dutch Elm disease. We did prepare some amendments that are in your packets. I think I'm going to let Ron talk about that, and if there's any questions, I can help answer too.
So, I'm going to supplement this by saying, Aaron has buried the lead a little bit, because the whole conversation he's had has been about the public trees in the boulevards and in the parks. And if I have my numbers correctly, that represents only about 25% of all of the ash trees in the city. So, everybody here represents the private sector, which is about 75% of all trees in the city are private trees, and 50% of those private trees are ash trees. So, what you're seeing here is going to be an enormous community-wide impact when the Emerald Ash Bore is here, because not only will it impact and kill those trees in the boulevards and parks, but it's going to kill your tree in your yard. And it's going to potentially infect your neighbor's tree. So, what the ordinance is going to do is going to address, number one, the public nuisance aspect of the confirmed finding of Emerald Ash Bore within Brown County. And I think the focus as well has been on the preemptive nature, trying to get ahead of this, because the problem is, is once it's there, it's almost, it's already too late. Once you have trees dying, you're already way behind the curve. So, what the proposed ordinance that's in your packet is asking this council to consider doing is to, number one, make a declaration of Emerald Ash Bore is a public nuisance. Right now, Dutch Elm has already been, and has been for 30 years, a declared public nuisance. We're now adding Emerald Ash Bore to that declaration. And then, putting in place a regulatory structure to start working to deal with those. One is the quarantine area, which is basically saying that once it's found, you can't take it without, take it outside of the city limits, except for at recognized disposal sites. And another part of this that will get supplemented as well is that there will be a lot of public information and education as part of this. There will be a website that's going to be put together that will identify for folks what the changes are, what they need to be looking for, but also, how to comply with what we hope will be an adopted ordinance by the council. That will include a timeframe for when ash tree work can be done, and that'll, what's that called, the flight season?
Oh, the time period where you can't, yeah, it's from, basically, from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
May 1st to September 1st is going to be a time period when you simply cannot trim, cut, remove an ash tree. So, all of this work that we're talking about is going to have to be done before May 1st and after September 1st. Because during that flight season, when you're trimming and cutting and pruning, you are now basically throwing the Emerald Ash Bore out to your neighbor's yard. So, there'll be, that'll be part of the ordinance will be to establish that timeframe, when you can and can't be removing ash trees. Another way to try to help restrict and limit the problem is to get the tree removal folks licensed, so that they understand how to handle that. Because there will be a special way that they have to deal with this wood, once they get it down. So, we'll be proposing an arborist license, and potentially, an applicator's license for those people who want to try their hand at treating these trees, and they can be treated, I understand. It's an aggressive and expensive process, but people's trees can be treated and potentially kept free of EAB if successful.
There's very effective treatments, but it's, once you start, you have, you do it forever, if you want to preserve the tree, and there's an expense. And so, yeah, we just want to make sure that it's being done right, and the correct chemicals are being applied and at the correct dose.
So, at a time when we hate to keep piling on regulation and licensing requirements, it's exactly what this particular nuisance is going to require, that there be licensed applicators and licensed tree removers, we're calling them arborists, but that process will be set forth in the ordinance as well. And then, the last significant portion of this is the enforcement of it. Because we will be actually trying to do this preemptively and getting ahead of it, we're going to ask, as part of the ordinance to be adopted, that there be delayed enforcement. And there will be two triggers for that. One will be, once it's confirmed by certified laboratory analysis to have been found within Brown County, then that's when a notice will be put out publicly to let everybody know that city officials will now begin enforcing that. But we're hopeful that that will be a while, but the point is, is that once it's discovered, things need to be moving quickly at that point. And then, lastly, for the licensing portion, we're going to let, we're going to hope that the current tree removal services will be able to operate throughout the year, 2019, without any changes. But then, they will need to be licensed no later than January 1st of 2020, and get in compliance with that. Unless, of course, it's confirmed earlier and things have to move faster. But that's the ordinance framework that we'll be proposing to you folks.
Do you have to leave to eat, or? Okay, I thought you would. While they leave, any questions for, I guess I would have one question. Have any cities participated financially in assisting private owners?
Not that I'm aware of. I know certain communities are, they have a budget to help treat some of the boulevard trees, just so that it can delay the time that, so it delays the amount of trees that need to come out at a certain time. So, they'll take a budget, they'll have a budget, and they'll treat so many trees, basically, to slow the amount that need to come out, so.
So, that's going to be a real issue for a lot of unexpected expense that people are going to struggle with, so.
And part of our education, even now, is, you know, most people have more than one ash in their yard.
I have five.
Yeah, exactly. So, there's very few, if you have ash, more than likely, you have more than one. So, at this point, a lot of the education we're doing is, you know, ash in general have a lot of dead branches, a lot of dieback. It's very normal for our ash trees to not look that great. Don't spend your money trimming them out every year or every other year. Start thinning, taking them out and replanting. And so, I've said that over 1,000 times, I think, in the last few years, is, don't spend your money trimming your ash. Start removing, taking that money, remove them now, because the prices are only going to go up. Once Emerald Ash Bore is found, the prices to remove trees are going to go up, because they become more hazardous, and there's, you know, there's just a lot more work for everybody, so they're able to do that.
Opportunity for some entrepreneurs to build their business.
Can you speak to the cost right now about tree removal?
For removal, it's, you know, it just depends on the size or diameter of your tree. It depends on the location of the tree. If it's in the backyard, and they're able to get equipment to it or not get equipment to it, it's hard to say. I can't give you a diameter, inch, cost at this point. There's so many variables on location, size, whether they can get good access to it or not, so.
What type of services do you provide to homeowners, saying, hey, I want to take these trees out, but what do I put in place of them? Do you provide that service to our public?
Yeah, I provide information or counsel to homeowners if they have questions on what they should be planning. A lot of times, I'll use the information I use for our boulevard trees. I'll go look at trees, if there's insect disease issues, to give them an idea of what is the problem, and who they maybe need to contact to resolve their problem. We don't do the work, but we'll give them assistance or guidance to help them work through the tree issues or plant issues that they have. The only other thing I'll say is, I'm glad Ron brought it up, is, yes, there are more than just the boulevard ash trees. An estimation of private trees, you're looking at 15,000 to 20,000 private trees. It's hard to say, we haven't inventoried it, but like Mayor Mike said, he's got five in his yard. A lot of people have five ash trees in their yard. And so, that will be even a greater burden on the private sector.
I will see you with those longer me and the ash trees.
Can you also address the cost of treatment? I saw in the packet that every two to three years is a cyclical retreatment. So, what does it cost for insecticide?
Well, the first, and here again, there's variables, but usually, you're treating every two years for the first, I think it's six to eight years, and then after that, it's once every three years. So, the amount that the trees have to be treated will eventually go over, down over time, just because of the population of the insect. The less amount of ash trees you have, the less population of insect you have. The price, I think it was, I can't remember the diameter per inch, but an average tree, you're looking at $200 to $300 every two years. An average is around 16-inch diameter ash, 16 to 18-inch. So, $200 to $300 per, every two years.
I was trying to find it, and my iPad froze up, but in the report that you received, there was a number giving, given for the value of the asset of tree inventory. What was that number again? I mean, it was a staggering amount.
Yeah, it's, I don't have that off the top of my head, if somebody else has got their.
Was it 20 million?
Yeah, it was.
18 million, I think.
Yeah. If you're looking at the total effects or the value of what those trees give you, yes, that number is high.
37% of that value is in our ash trees?
Yeah.
48 million?
Is the appraised value of our entire street population, street tree population.
Anything else?
I'm sure we'll be seeing you again.
Hopefully, not for a while.
Okay. Good to get people thinking about it.
Aaron, is there any truth to the fact that the extra cold weather we've had is going to have any effect on the ash?
Yes, so, there have been studies done. There was a little bit of panic by some of the professionals recently in Sioux Falls, because the word that was being spread around Sioux Falls was, the cold weather, this cold winter is going to wipe them out. And it's not true. The studies that have been done show that there is a decrease, or an increase in the amount of larvae that are killed in colder winters. They just did a little bit of sampling last weekend in Sioux Falls and found that 30% of the insects they're finding were dead in Sioux Falls, the larvae. But here again, it depends how, where they're looking for the insect. If it's high in the tree in the thinner branches, those insects are more likely to succumb to the cold weather. The ones in the trunk, or the main hardwood, or larger wood portions are going to survive those cold temps. But it's, it will definitely, this cold weather, the positive, it will slow the insect down, so we can all appreciate that.
Anything more? We all done? Need a motion?
Second.
Motion Remley, and second by Slade Hansen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.